Okay, ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join Councilman Taylor in flag salute and then remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic with which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and essence of all.
Remain standing, please.
Lord Jesus, you are good, God, and apart from you there is no wisdom, apart from you we don't have clarity, God, but in your presence there's the fullness of joy and wisdom and clarity, God, so I pray that tonight, Lord, as we just welcome you into this place, God, you make your presence known, make your wisdom known, help our cities to make decisions that are honoring to you, Father, it's in Jesus' wonderful name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Called to order our city council meeting of March 16th, second item on the agenda is public comments, announcements, recognitions, do you have any public comments or recognitions? Kim, no? All right, I will move forward then with the two items that were on the agenda, first one is our Vietnam Veterans Day proclamation. And, Marla, Charlie, would you come forward?
I'm with her.
Yeah, sure, more family members here?
No.
You're the most important part of it.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. We have a proclamation that I'd like to read, proclamation, whereas throughout our history, our nation's history, brave women and men in uniform has, have risked their lives to protect our country and defend our freedoms, and whereas we as United Americans wish to thank and honor the Vietnam veterans and their families for their service and sacrifices on behalf of a grateful nation, and whereas over 2.7 million veterans were deployed to Southeast Asia in support of the Vietnam War, and with more than 58,000 giving the ultimate sacrifice of their lives, and over 304,000 returning home after being wounded, and whereas the last of the United States Combat Troops departed the Republic of Vietnam on March 29th, 1973, and whereas the Vietnam Veterans Recognition Act of 2017, signed by President Donald Trump, officially designated March 29th as the day of national observance honoring those men and women who served in Vietnam and who served throughout the world during the Vietnam era, and whereas Guthrie, Oklahoma, has always paid special tribute to the veterans who have served this country through such things as the Veterans Memorial at Honor Park and the achievement of the designation as a Purple Heart City. Therefore, I, Stephen J. Gettling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, do hereby proclaim Monday, March 29th, 2021, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in Guthrie, Oklahoma, and ask our citizens to join with me in thanking the Vietnam veterans and all veterans for their service to our community, to our state, and to our nation. I had the honor of signing that proclamation, we have Ron Powell and his wife Marilyn, and Charlie Downs representing the American Legion here, and I would like to present this to the three of you, and hopefully you can take that back to the Legion, and they'll find an appropriate place to frame and mount that, okay? Thank you for your service. Thank you very much. Do you want to say something, Charlie? You look like you wanted to say something. Ron?
I just wanted to say that with that recognition of the National, of the Memorial Day for Vietnam veterans, it has encouraged several organizations to actually have Vietnam veteran welcome home, because we did not receive that when we came home. I don't know if anybody really knows that, but when I flew in after serving my combat tour in Vietnam, we flew into San Francisco and they told us to, number one, if you leave the airport, go in civilian clothes, if you, and do leave, you should go together, because it's not a very friendly place out there, and so anyway, we just appreciate you and the city recognizing the Vietnam veterans and
Appreciate your service.
We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service. Chris, do you want to get a picture of them? Okay, come on. There we go, put her right in the middle, there we go, good, she served two. Good, thank you, appreciate that. One more recognition that I'd like to make, you know, we, we had a census this year, it's the whole, whole country, and for the City of Guthrie and actually incorporating a lot of Logan County, we had a task force that was set up, and Shonda Rooney and Dan Kasseck chaired that, and would you come forward, both of you, come forward. The census is a really important thing, making sure that we get total count of, of all the citizens, in our case, of all the citizens of Guthrie and beyond in Logan County, and it, it affects funding, it's going to affect a lot of possibly distribution of not only funds, but, but also represent, representation, and so it's a critical element, and I think Guthrie was in the top like 25% or even higher in the state in terms of the percentage of people that we got in contact with, and Shonda and, and Dan were instrumental in making that happen, so I have a certificate of appreciation from the US Census, from the Bureau of, of the US Census hereby recognizing the City of Guthrie as an invaluable member of the 2020 Census Community Partnership and Engagement Program, we appreciate the efforts you made in making this partnership program a success and helping to achieve a successful 2020 census. Shonda, Dan?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job, good job, all right. Did you get that picture too, Chris?
I, I can get it. I know where they were.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make you a copy.
No, you can, you put it here.
All right, well, thank you very much. The third item on our agenda is the consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda, A and B, A is the approval of the minutes of the city council's special workshop of March 2nd, and B is the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of March 2nd. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous approval of those present to approve the consent agenda. Item number four, I will open now our meeting to a public, public hearing, we have a public meeting, hearing to, on the proposed FY 2021 CDBG grant application from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce to fund a water system improvement project. Mill?
I can go first and kind of talk about the scope of the project, it's a water main, water valve replacement of an existing 12-inch water main along division from the water plant to Harrison Avenue, given the age, size, location, and recent water line break history of this 12-inch main, it seemed more prudent to replace the full length of the line from the water plant to Harrison Avenue in lieu of breaking it up into two or more projects, that's why this is a little larger than our last CDBG project, this 12-inch water main was installed in the 1920s, so it's approximately 100 years old. Some side notes on our city water distribution system, the city has approximately 293,000 linear feet of water mains that were installed prior to 1975, that equates to 55 and a half miles of water line, this does not include the water main to the length and, and coal, that's roughly 55 miles of water line that's 50 years older, older, many of the system's shut-off valves are no longer functional, the water's safe to drink, but many of these water mains have substantial sediment buildup of minerals that when stirred up from leaks, et cetera, can create odor, color, and taste issues, but again, it's safe to drink. Since 1995, we've only replaced approximately 13,000 linear feet of water mains, that equates to two and a half miles or four and a half percent of the system since 1995, over 20 years. We cannot keep kicking the can down the road forever, we need to explore more long-term solutions, which basically equates to funding solutions. This summary just addresses our city water distribution system, we have similar substantial deferred maintenance issues with our sanitary sewer collection system in our city street system. We made a great start with the construction of the new wastewater treatment system, a $20.6 million investment, but we still have a long way to go. Back to this particular CDBG application for the 12-inch water main along division from the water plant to Harrison, experience with the recent water main break back in February, just from that one break on that line, we were losing approximately 1,750 gallons per minute, probably lost between two to two and a half million gallons of treated water from just that one leak, estimated cost was of that treated water ranges from $11,000 to $14,000 depending on the exact loss. The shut-off valves are no longer functional on this stretch of line, so we had to shut the water treatment plant and water to the entire town off so that we could slow the water flow to repair the water leak, and because of these various factors, the series, the city experienced substantial overtime costs to repair the water main break, break in addition to the cost of the lost water. About two, three years ago, we experienced another leak at this same water main down by the water plant with similar experiences. The estimated cost of this project is $885,649, we're asking for a CDBG grant of $299,999, seems like an odd amount, it's 34% of the project, but points that you get for awarding the grant have different ranges, what you ask for, you get different competitive points. Local match would be $585,650 or 66%, this is a very competitive grant, dealing with our grant writer and her feedback, Millie Vance, and staff, we feel that the 299,999 of CDBG grant funds being requested is the maximum grant that we can request and remain competitive to be able to hopefully get awarded the grant. The potential sources are the city local fund match of $585,650, recent passage of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 that was recently adopted, input that we got from the Oklahoma Municipal League, they estimate that Guthrie can expect to receive approximately $1.8 million from that American Rescue Plan, water and sewer infrastructure are eligible expenses, so we hope to use those funds for the match, if not, in our Guthrie Public Works Authority unobligated fund balance effective October 1st, beginning of this budget year, we had 1.7 million of unbudgeted fund balance that we can use, and then of course, we would also have some operating budget if we needed to use part of that as well, and you have several agenda items that are on the agenda relative to this grant application that are support documents, I'll let Ms. Vance walk you through those after we hear from her and receive any public input.
Okay.
Appreciate the opportunity to, to meet with you tonight, Ms. Ralsup's done an excellent job of describing the, the project and certainly the need for the project, just a little bit on the grant side, this application will be due in May the 1st, the project will serve citywide beneficiaries, so it will score higher because we're serving more people, the city does meet the 51% low mod income requirement for families, at least 50, 51% of them meet those guidelines, as far as your, your budgeting, this application be submitted in May, it'll probably be August, September before we hear something, so you'd be into next year's budget for your match contribution funds. With that, I would just pause since we're in public hearing to see if any of you all have questions or if any of the public has questions about the project.
Any questions from council? Any questions from public in the room? Hearing none.
Hearing none, you can conclude the public hearing and then we'll go through these next agenda items and be glad to answer any questions on those if you have them.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to item number five, which is discussion, possible action to adopt the Citizen Participation Plan concerning the FY 2021 CDB, CDBG grant application for the Oklahoma Department of Commerce for the Water System Improvement Project.
The Citizen Participation Plan is one that you adopt with each CDBG grant, the plan in a nutshell is just the encouragement of input from your local public, and we do that by holding two public hearings, one during the application phase and one during the closeout phase, we just want to make sure they have adequate notice of the hearings, that we hold them in a place that's accessible to people, that we provide information about the proposed project, the plan authorizes the mayor to sign application-related documents and goes on further to say that if you should have a significant number of non-English speaking persons, you would provide for an interpreter, in a nutshell, we just want to encourage the connection and the communication between the council and your local public.
All right, any questions, Millie, on that? Well, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the Citizen Participation Plan as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous approval then to adopt the Citizen Participation Plan. Item number six, discussion, possible action of Resolution 2021-6 concerning, again, the CDBG grant for the Water System Improvement, Millie?
This resolution, resolution is the board's formal statement that you do want to make this application, the resolution says that you understand it's federal funding that originates at HUD and that is passed on through the Oklahoma Department of Commerce on to municipalities. It further says that because it's federal money, it has federal rules and regulations attached to it, and that should you be funded, that you'll abide by those rules and regulations.
Okay, any questions by the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to adopt Resolution 2021-6.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous approval then to approve Resolution 2021-6. Item number seven, discussion of possible action to adopt a Resident Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan, Millie?
This plan also is one of the federal requirements and is, goes along with each particular grant that you have, it relates specifically to the water line replacement project, the city is required to have a plan on file just in case anyone should have to be moved or relocated from their home, we know that as a result of replacing this existing line, we don't plan to do that, we don't intend to do that, however, this money originates at HUD, which is Housing and Urban Development, so most of these regulations are for housing projects, but they do attach to all of the different programs, so our plan is that we don't intend to relocate anyone out of their home, but if that should happen, then the city would need to provide replacement housing, that's why we always talk about this during the application phase, there's something like that were to happen, we want to know on the front end.
Okay, questions from council? All right, I'll entertain a motion then to adopt the residential anti-displacement relocation assistance plan.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous approval from those present to adopt the Residential Anti-Displacement Relocation Assistance Plan. Item number eight, discussion and possible action on approval of the 2021 Fair Housing Proclamation, which I will read, proclamation reads as follows, pursuant to the authority granted to me as Mayor of the City of Guthrie, I do hereby proclaim that the City of Guthrie supports and encourages fair housing practices, further, I decree that the City of Guthrie affirms to follow the concepts, practices, and intent embodied in the federal, state, and local laws in regard to fair housing, the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing because of race, or color, national origin, religion, sex, familiar status, sexual orientation, gender identity, handicap, or any other federally declared characteristic. The City of Guthrie encourages each city, agency, lender, or real estate business planning, housing promotions, or activities to implement the provisions of the Fair Housing Act. Anybody have any concern, or I will then entertain a motion to approve the Fair Housing Proclamation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand, very good, I will then proceed to sign. Very good, Millie, anything else that we need to do?
I think Public Works has a few items, maybe.
When we get to the Public Works meetings, you'll get back up, we have a couple more items.
You get to come back.
I'll do it.
Very good, very good. Item number nine, discussion and possible action to confirm the mayor's appointment to, of Jerry Gamble to the Guthrie ADA Advisory Committee for a new three-year term through March 31st of 2024. I'll entertain a motion then to approve that nomination.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous approval then to appoint Mr. Gamble to the ADA Advisory Committee through March 31st of 24. Item number 10, discussion, possible action to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Darrell Covington to the Guthrie Historic Preservation Commission for a new three-year term ending March 31st, 2024. I'll entertain a motion then to approve that reappointment.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous.
Oh, hold on. Comment? For the record in the minutes, it should be reflected that the position that Mr. Covington in is the one that represents the Logan County Historic Society, because everyone on there represents a different board or entity.
Yeah, and just to, again, for the record, I was in contact with Logan County Historical Society to see if they wanted to have him as a reappointment, and they concurred.
Okay, very good. So he is Logan County Historical Society representative on our Historic Preservation Commission. Item number 11, discussion, possible action to confirm the mayor's nomination to the, to the Guthrie Planning.
You want to finish the vote on the last one?
You're right, we didn't. We had, we did have a, we did have a nomination, or a, a motion and a second.
We had a motion and a second.
We had a motion and a second, we passed no discussion, well, actually, we had discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous, thank you, unanimous approval then to reappoint Mr. Covington through March of 2024. Thank you, Don. Item number 11, discussion, possible action to confirm the mayor's appointment to the Guthrie Planning Commission, appointment A is to reappoint Chris Bryant for a new three-year term through March 31st of 2024, item B is to reappoint Abe Glassenpor to the Planning Commission for a new three-year term, again, through March 31st of 24, and C is to appoint Aaron Rooney to fill a vacant, unexpired term through March 31st of 2023. I'll entertain a motion for all three?
Yep.
For all three?
Second.
And a second for all three?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous approval for all three of those individuals as submitted. Item number 12, city manager report.
Have no additional report tonight.
Okay, item number 13, comments from council, go ahead, Ms., Ms. Paget?
I have no comments this evening, thank you.
Counselman Channel?
I skipped last time, so I'll tell you this.
Okay, good, good.
This water line replacement, I mean, it's hard to get excited about new pipe, but I'm excited about new pipe, if you've ever seen the inside of that line that runs from the plant up division, it's the one you might have seen pictures and stuff that has all the gross scales and different colored junk growing in it, that's a big step towards hoping, helping the water, it's not going to fix everything, but it's a big infected piece that we're getting out, and I sure hope that all this works good with the, with the grant and we get to do this job.
Okay, Councilman Taylor?
Thanks, staff, I really appreciate all the hard work and getting all this stuff together for all the planning for the pipeline, getting it all put in, I think it's great, I've seen pictures of the same thing that Don's talking about, and it's, some of it looks nasty, so it's gonna, like I said, it may not eliminate all the taste, but maybe it'll help eliminate part of it, and thank you Vietnam veterans, I, you know, I know a lot of you guys that came back, so I really appreciate what y'all did, and so, and other than that, thank you, staff, appreciate everything you guys, that time.
Thank you, just a comment again, thanking the staff that are picking up the limbs, that continuing process is going along, and a lot, a lot of effort on that, and also, again, thank this, any of the staff that are involved with giving the COVID shot, I know we've got police officers that are down there helping with the logistics, we've got volunteers from the community that are helping with the shots and logistics inside the building, and it's going, going, you know, just swimmingly, going really, really smoothly, so just congratulations to all, all those people that are involved with, with trying to keep our community as safe as it possibly can in terms of, in terms of COVID. With that, ladies and gentlemen, city council is adjourned, and I open our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of March 16th, item number two is a consent agenda, two items other than consent agenda, A is the approval of the minutes of the public worth, works meeting of March 2nd, and B is the confirmation of the city council action on Resolution 2021-06 concerning the grant application for the Water System Improvement Project. I'll entertain a motion then to approve the consent agenda items A and B.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous approval to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Item number three, discussion, possible action on the Resolution 2020, 20 dash 20, or 2021-7, thank you, designating the leverage of funds for the CBD grant, Millie, I guess that's one of yours.
Again, the amount we have discussed for the city's contribution on this project is $585,650, and that would be the amount that you're committing to.
Any questions, Millie, from the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to approve that Resolution 2021-7.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval to move forward Resolution 2021-7. Item number four, discussion, possible action to the agreement with Park Hill Smith and Cooper to prepare the 2021 CDB grant application. Millie?
Park Hill Smith Cooper, we've kind of rebranded and go a lot by Park Hill, it's such a mouthful, is the company that I now work with. For 26 years, I was employed as Millie Vance Incorporated, and about a year and a half ago, I sold out and we merged with this company. The requirement that I had as I sold my business was one that I've had and used for the last 26 years. When I work with a community, if I don't get you a grant, you don't owe me anything. That was one of my requirements, that I continue to be able to do that, to help communities in that way. The other requirement that I had is that communities need to be able to work with whatever engineer they want to work with. Even though my company is an engineering firm and we provide these services, there's no reason to change engineering, and that was also one of the requirements. I think it's the most ethical way to conduct business, so they have no problem with that either. In the agreement that you have, it stipulates the administrative fee of 8% of grant funds, not the matching funds, and the administrative services are everything from application all the way through closeout of the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'd just like to emphasize the fact that if we're not successful, there's no payment. I greatly appreciate your willingness to step forward and take that risk. However, with your expertise in writing these grants, maybe the risk isn't so great because you are very, very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate all of your service.
Would your engineers do that by chance?
No, sir. And I can tell you, Bill's not here, is he? Bless his heart. I was going to tease Bill and say, you know, you could work like that too, but in the state of Oklahoma, there's a Board of Engineers and Board of Ethics, and by law, they're not allowed to do work and not charge for it. Therefore...
They got some good love, yes.
They can't do what I do.
All right. Well, I will entertain a motion then to approve the agreement with Park Hill Smith and Cooper on this grant application.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval from those present to approve the agreement with Park Hill Smith and Cooper on that CDB grant. Item number five, discussion, possible action on Resolution 2021-8 revising the Logan Rural Water for District Number One, their water rate effective April 15th. Millie, right?
City Clerk Kim Biggs will handle both five and six.
Kim?
So this resolution represents the annual CPI increase, and this year is at 1.4% for both rural water and Langston University, which is a whopping 8 cents per 1,000 gallons. And so with rural water, their new rate is $5.63 per 1,000 gallons.
Any questions of Kim from the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to approve Resolution 2021-8.
I'll make it.
Second? A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval for Resolution 2021-8. Item number six, discussion, possible action on Resolution 2021-9 revising the Langston University water rate. Kim?
Same increase, 1.4%. They have a take-or-pay rate, though, of about 6 million gallons, and so they see a little bit increase with that. It went up to $31,453.29. And then there, anything over 6 million gallons, they pay $5.52 per 1,000 gallons.
All right. Any questions of Kim? Entertain a motion then to approve Resolution 2021-9.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval of all those present then to approve Resolution 2021-9. Item number seven, consider approval to convene into executive session pursuant to discussion on the purchase and appraisal of real property concerning our wastewater easement for our wastewater treatment plant project. Motion?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are moving towards the executive session. Okay, all right. We will, I'll entertain a motion to return and come out of executive session.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval to come out of executive session. Item number nine, consider action on the purchase and appraisal of real property. No action taken at this time, that being the last item on our agenda. We're adjourned.